I'd like to call a order. The October fifteenth, twenty twenty, Myhamsburg City School Board Meeting. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call?
Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mrs. Angel?
Here.
Mrs. Nice?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Toadvine?
Present.
Dr. Blessing?
Present.
Mr. Homan?
Here.
I'm present as well.
Okay. So we have everybody here but Mr. Lewis, and he's invisibly here.
No, he's visible, we see him.
Okay, um, next is the adoption of the agenda for tonight's meeting. May I have a motion, please?
I move we adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting, October fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay.
I second it.
The first from Miss Angel, second from Miss Nice. Any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Okay. Item D is approval of the minutes for the, approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting held on September tenth of twenty twenty.
I move for the approval of the regular board minutes dated September tenth, twenty twenty.
We have a first from Mr. Amsler. I guess I'll second it. Roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along to item E. Approval of the financial report, September thirtieth of twenty twenty. Motion?
I move for the approval of the financial report dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Okay, the first from Miss Nice, second from Mr. Amsler. Any questions about financial report?
Where are we?
Steve, if you want to open the September twenty twenty board reports, the first attachment for me, thank you. Um, we're looking pretty good, actually, if we scroll down to the first page, second page. We've actually, the only thing that concerns me at this point is we have not gotten our final settlement from the Montgomery County Auditor's Office. I was hoping it would come in September, it has not, and as of today, we still have yet to receive it. Um, as you know, they delayed, um, gave an extension to the collection of property taxes. So typically, we have all of our taxes in, in the settlement, in the final settlement by August, September. Well, September's gone, and, and we still don't have that, and we're halfway through October, and we still don't have that. So until I get that final settlement, um, we're seeing a little bit of variation on the property taxes because I'm just not sure when that's going to come. Um, and now the top across the state is that collections is not down, that it's averaging about ninety-seven and a half percent collections out of a hundred percent, so that's pretty good. We usually come around ninety-eight to ninety-eight and a half. So I'm going to leave my estimates at ninety-eight and see where we go, but until we get the final settlement, which I hope comes in soon because we're working on the five-year. But, um, overall, the big variances that you see are mostly related to that not receiving the final, um, settlement check. Because when we get that, we can also take out all the auditor fees that they charge for collections, and that's why some of your other budget lines are off. So, but other than that, we're doing pretty well, pretty much on target.
Thank you. Al, are there any questions?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Okay, and then I miss pass. Okay, next we'll move on to the recognition of citizens, staff, and students. There are several items in here that we will go through. I will, uh, first I will read this so that people know, uh, that may be watching this on television. All visitors who may have concerns and have not asked in advance to be placed on the agenda may bring their concerns and/or questions to the Board of Education at this point in the meeting. They will be able to state their name, their address, and what organization that they represent. A maximum of thirty minutes of public participation may be permitted at each meeting. I would also like to remind, the reason why I went and read this is to remind people that if they would like to send something, an email or something, and would like it to be presented, Dr. Blessing would be more than happy to, uh, oblige you for that, okay? And that would be sent to her email address. And I will turn this over to Dr. Blessing.
Thank you. Well, today we had the privilege of recognizing our student of the month, and we have a video to capture that presentation. So we, we traveled to Jane Chance Elementary this morning, and we awarded fifth grader Jack Pento with the student of the month. And so if you want to go ahead and play the video. There's fifteen, and he doesn't fly from the gym. Fifth graders. There's all the fifth graders. And you'll notice that Mr. Myers and Farmers Merchants Bank is at the A. Please hear. A special presentation for one of our old dogs who has been recognized as student of the month for the month of September for the entire district. So, my great pleasure, please welcome Jack Pinto out here to stay with us. And this president bears Jack Pinto. I'm going to read his nomination form that was by fourth and fifth grade teachers. Jack fulfilled all the expectations of our charter, responsibility, kindness, respect, and safety. Jack Pinto has been a wonderful first impression during the birthday of fifth grade year at JCP. He has demonstrated all like manners, participated in all classes, accepted and followed all of the new safety protocols that are positive activity. It is clear he is ready and wants to back to school. Even though no one met Jack for a week, they remember him from previous days because the student who smiles at all staff members and greets them all the further he goes. When asked his fortitude about him, their feedback was overwhelming, made me believe they knew how thoughtful he was as a student of Jane Chance for everyone. But also was a thoughtful student with his academics and class performances. In the spring, he showed the doors, that was the forefront of all his classes, helping his teachers to everyone organically. When they had a rough lessons, Jack whispered a powerful class message on group classroom despite other workers. Jack was described by one of his previous teachers as a fantastic leader and a rock star. An genuine spirit who embraces his students, shares his heart, and gives thanks to the community. Jack is a role model for an elite class student of Jane Chance on his school, but the students of the entire world. He got the amazing act of Jack, and congratulations to this reputation.
Thank you, good morning, and congratulations, Jack, for being the building man. But additionally, being the building man means a district man, and so being a district man, I'm here for a few extra accolades and awards. So being a district man means he beat all the elementary schools and high school and students in the district to be the overall leader for the block. And I have a fully sanitized plaque here for what we're talking about. And I also actually was still a dollar. I don't know if you guys know what a silver dollar is, but that's a nuts house coin that is pure silver. So it's actually a dollar coin, but since it's pure silver, it's worth closer to like fifty dollars. So that was something nice you could keep and take out and look. And I encourage you all to keep up the good work. This is my first one this year, and I'm excited to be out and see you again. And I'm sure I'll be back before school years over, so I don't know who will be next, but keep up the good work, maybe we won't be able to. So congratulations to Jack, thanks.
And then we have Dr. Blessing, he's written more of his short safety words about Jack.
Good morning, everyone, and congratulations, Jack. And on behalf of this board, we are recording you right now, so we're going to be playing this presentation with TV in our board meeting if you want to tune in to our company. So, we give you a battalion, and again, congratulations, and we're proud of you. It's a pleasure to have you at Jane Chance Elementary and Primary. So, one more, one more.
That was very nice, wasn't it?
Nice job, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very, um, pleasant young man, and it was, it was great to be there and be a part of that. And also, you know, um, thank you to Mr. Meyer, Sean Meyer, so that was, that was great as well. And then I think we wanted to just show, I don't know, Steve, if you have the picture of Ethan Dedda? He was our February student of the month, and we were not able, we were able to give him his recognition, but he was not able to come to the March board meeting because of, of the COVID-19. So we stopped by. Last year Ethan was at Mark Twain as a fifth grader, so we met him at the middle school this morning, and we gave his, him his medallion as well. So we got a picture of Ethan there, so we told him we would be broadcasting it tonight as well at the board meeting, so congratulations to Ethan as well.
Nice. Yep. Congratulations, Ethan and Jack. Students like you that make teaching a wonderful profession to be in.
And we had a few other recognitions, uh, under this category. National Custodian Day was October second, so we wanted to make sure to recognize our custodians for all of their hard work. Also, Fire Prevention Week is coming up. It's actually, uh, let's see here, I want to get it right, um, it is the, I can't, where am I, I'm not seeing it. Oh, October ninth? October ninth?
Yep.
So, and we wanted to send a special thank you to the men and women who serve as part of the Miami Valley Fire District and surrounding fire districts. We would like to thank the members of the Miami Valley Fire District, Mr. Bob Pugh and Mr. Chris Amsler for providing a variety of resources for our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
And then also, uh, School Psychology Awareness Week, um, and we wanted to recommend that as well. It's coming up before our next board meeting, November ninth through the thirteenth, so we appreciate all of the, um, efforts and work of our school psychologists as well. So those are our recognitions for this month.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Blessing. Chris Amsler?
Yes, sir.
My student, uh, I just, I'm very, I want to say I'm very proud of you, and you do wonderful things for Myhamsburg, so, so thank you.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the superintendent and treasurer CFO recommend that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding with the Myhamsburg Classroom Teachers Association. Who is going to speak to that?
I was like, which one of us? Well, we asked, and the teachers were great as always, um, that in order to minimize people coming to work when they're sick, that we would eliminate all the perfect attendance incentives for this one year, because we don't want people to think they're missing out on something and come to work and be sick and spread COVID or anything else. Um, and so the teachers were great about helping us get this written and taken care of. Now, if they don't use all their personal days, we will pay them out a stipend of a hundred and twenty-five day, dollars per day that they don't use, so there is some reward. And so we are asking the board to approve the MOU.
Okay, thank you. Next, the superintendent and treasurer CFO recommended the Board of Education approve the following resolution, authorizing the suspension of perfect attendance incentives bonus for all bargaining and administrative employees for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Yep, this is ditto for all the non-bargaining and administrative staff as well. Um, so they will receive the same payout of a hundred and twenty-five dollars for any of their, um, unused personal days, um, or their per diem, whichever is less. But just carrying on the same MOU that we have in place for the teachers.
Okay, thank you. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following. October nineteenth through the tw- twenty-third, twenty twenty is National School Bus Safety Week, and the theme is Red Lights Mean Stop. The theme of the National School Bus Safety Week is derived from the poster contest the year before. The two thousand nineteen winning poster was drawn by, uh, Brian Torres of Tavoris, a twelfth grader at Stars Academy in Patterson, New Jersey.
We just have a picture of the, the winning, um, artwork.
Yes, neat, isn't it?
That's beautiful.
I like that little boy walking on the bus there. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following proclamation. Whereas the public awareness is key to effectively preventing drug abuse and to educating Ohioans youth about dangers of school, sorry, of alcohol, tobacco, and drug abuse. And whereas preventing substance abuse with communities requires cooperation from workplaces, families, schools, and faith communities. And whereas this year's red ribbon celebration theme, Be Happy, Be Brave, Be Drug Free, highlights the year-round message of being school, tobacco, and other drug free. Whereas the Drug Free Action Alliance urges all Ohioans to wear a red ribbon, sign up for a Drug Free Ohio, make a commitment to a healthy lifestyle. And whereas business media, social services, government, schools, service organizations, religious institutions, safety forces, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying the red ribbon during the week-long celebration. Therefore, the Myhamsburg City School District does hereby declare October twenty-third through October thirty-first as Red Ribbon Celebration Week. We hereby encourage all citizens to participate in alcohol, tobacco, and other drug education and all related prevention activities, thus making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle. Any comments? I will. I think that, um, this is something that every community is plagued with, it doesn't matter, uh, you know, whether it's, um, someone that has a high, an area of high socio-economic area, or whether it's a, a, an area that's, uh, a little, uh, poorer area. This affects everybody, so it's a very important week, I think, to, um, to put forth to young people. Next is the approval of the board trainings. In accordance with the board policy, uh, BHBA, it is recommended that the School Board of Education approve the following requests for training as offered by the Ohio School Boards Association. October eighth of twenty twenty, Ohio School Board Association Southwest Regional Fall Conference is going to be virtual. Chris Amsler, Tim Lewis, and Nice. November seventh through the tenth, twenty twenty, Ohio School Board Association Capital Conference Virtual, Chris Amsler, Sharon Angel, Tim Lewis, and Nice, and Dale Toadvine. Total cost of twelve hundred and twenty-five dollars, flat rate for all board members and administrators. Any questions, any statements?
I just say I move to approve the consent agenda A through E.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, so we had a motion. Miss Angel? Second from Miss Nice.
Did I interrupt you, Chris, were you going to say something?
No, ma'am. Too late now.
No, it's not, we just don't have discussion.
We're good.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Okay, and that item is passed. Next we'll move to the approval of a resolution for personnel classified extracurricular employment. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas the following extracurricular positions, uh, let me put them. They're going to steam up on me probably. Whereas the extracurricular positions have or has been offered to those employees of the district who are licensed, uh, individuals, and no such employee qualified to fill the position has or has, uh, accepted it. Whereas the school district has then advertised a position as available to any licensed individual who is qualified to fill that position, who is not employed by the board, no such person has applied for the, and accepted the position. Now, therefore be it resolved that under the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code thirty-three thirteen point five-three, the following positions is or are declared available to non-certificated persons who meet the standards adopted by the state board and may be filed, may be filled for a period of not more than one school year at the same salary and wage offered to a certificated person for the people activity program indicated. Boys, uh, basketball ninth grade, boys' basketball seventh grade, boys' JV coach, basketball boys varsity assistant, basketball girls varsity assistant, basketball girls ninth grade coach, basketball girls seventh grade coach, basketball girls eighth grade coach, winter guard junior high director, swimming head coach, swimming dive coach, winter site manager for the Myhamsburg Middle School, winter site manager for the Myhamsburg Middle School, winter site manager for the Myhamsburg High School. I have a motion.
I move for the approval of resolution for personnel classified and extracurricular employment.
Second.
Can I?
It's Tim, say Tim, David.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome. You got to jump in here even though you're not here.
Okay. Any comments? Roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Abstained.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay, that item is passed. Next we go to the approval of personnel reports. Employment in the Myhamsburg City School District is contingent upon the candidates submitting to and passing a BCI and FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted board policies. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the personnel reports, certificated and classified.
Thank you, Sharon. May I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, so we had a first from Mrs. Angel, second from Mrs. Nice.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
And that item is passed. Okay, next I would be reading the exact same thing I just read. And it is, approval of the personnel reports for the certificated classified supplemental stipend, human resource agenda items. I have a motion.
I move for the approval of the personnel report, certificated, classified, supplemental, and stipend.
Thank you, Mr. Amsler. Second, please.
I second it.
Thank you. Tim, can you hear okay?
It's cutting in and out. But I'm with you.
All right.
Or you're wondering why I haven't spoke up or what?
No, I was just being thankful.
Pardon me?
Thankful, like Thanksgiving?
Just move on.
Good answer. Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Uh, again, I shall abstain.
Okay. That item passes. Next we move to the approval of the Ohio School Counselor Evaluation System. It's recommended by the superintendent to approve the following administrator to be an OSCES evaluator, Mr. Jeremy Saylor, kinder school principal. And may I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the Ohio School Counselor Evaluation System evaluator.
Second.
Okay, so we had a first from Mrs. Nice, second from Mr. Amsler, um, Dr. Blessing?
We just appreciate Jeremy getting that, um, certification and being able to do that for us, so.
Okay.
Does that mean he's the only one in the district? I don't, so most of the administrators have.
Right.
He's the most recent addition to the list, okay? I thought that, but I wanted to clarify.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Okay, next we're moving on to, um, agreements and contracts. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following plans with the Southwest Educational Purchasing Council for medical insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, and voluntary vision insurance for the twenty twenty-one calendar year. Okay, motion.
Okay, uh, I move for the approval of the medical insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, and voluntary vision insurance for the twenty twenty-one calendar year.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Homan?
Anything say? It's favorite time of the year.
So, uh, our plan is a January one renewal date, and, um, we've been very fortunate to be with the EPC. The medical portion is a seven point five increase. It's a big increase, but not as big as some of our other neighboring places in the business, so, not that I say seven point five is great, it's still a, it, it's still an increase for our employees for that. At any time, we'd always love to have a negative or a zero renewal, but right now, I'm looking around everything, that's not going to occur. So we are very fortunate that we are with the EPC. As you recall, every other year with the EPC, you get rated by yourself, and then you get rated as everyone together. Um, and it actually worked for us this year. Um, had we been rated by ourselves, we would have had a, uh, double-digit increase. So it is, um, it has helped us this year in terms of that, so. Um, same plans as they did before, we offer the two high deductible plans, um, and we saw the PPO plan, and then a couple of years, or I think this is our second year now, we've broken out a dental plan with an orthodontics and without orthodontics, so, um, tried, we tried to give the employees give the employees options um for that. I can tell you, we're one of the few districts around that do do that for our employees, actually offering three medical plans and two dental plans, so. We we do what we do to to try what we can do in terms of that, so.
And so Steve, the large increase we would have received had we been on our own would have become because of past claims in the past year, correct?
We we do have some high, high-running claims out there. Several high-running claims and um prescriptions um are a big driving force behind that, so.
Have, Steve, have they said anything, and I don't know even where I work, because I'm not in those types of meetings very often, have they said anything in regards because of the pandemic of more people utilizing medical, or has that not even been just really discussed?
That's not really a factor that.
Okay, I was just wondering.
You know, as you look across the private and the public sector, the um, the drug uh prescriptions are really driving um those costs up in terms of that, but.
Right, that's what I kind of assumed, but.
And when you have someone with a catastrophic disease, that has to drive our premiums up.
And, you know, we, some years we have good years, other years we have bad years, but you know, and I kind of remind, and and the insurance committee will say, you know it as well, is, you know, that's why we have insurance to to help benefit those that that need it, and some years are better than others, and you know, we go from there.
I'm I'm just thankful we can offer our staff a plan.
We are still one of the few places that still offer a two thousand, four thousand high deductible plan. That's becoming more and more, as I call a dinosaur.
My deductible is higher than that.
Right.
As of entirely.
So when you kind of put all the cards on the table of what it is, I mean, that's pretty. You know, even even going to the healthcare exchange in terms of that, you're not gonna. But that doesn't make the increase any better, so.
Now, if that deductible went higher, would that change anything moving forward?
We kind of look at that each year, and we, or actually I kind of played around with another person of the company as a third party coming in just to reevaluate everything to make sure we're on the right track. And even if you go up to a three-six, which you would have to put in to pay for the premium, but pay for the deductible before it's covered, it.
Watches.
Right, it's not a, it's not a, it's not in the best interest right now, so.
I like you, Steve, just thank goodness, because you never know when you're gonna be the one that needs it.
Exactly, and that's, and and really the staff understands that, and some of the staff will say, look, there have been times that I've used it, my family's used it, and you know, that's why there's insurance, you know.
Yep, thank goodness, if somebody has cancer, or some catastrophic, uh, something happened that uh they would sure uh like to let somebody else. Yeah, it's it's nice to help each other. Any other comments? Miss Angel?
Mr. Lewis?
Abstain.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Abstain.
That's what I assumed.
That's the first time in fourteen years that I got a vote on that.
Yeah. I was thinking of that.
Yeah, yeah. You know, uh, my my wife, she qualified to have, but actually do another year of si- uh sick leave, and she opted not to because she felt like that she wanted the school not to have to pay her, so we're, you know, went to our own insurance and everything, and um that was something I had to really think about, because it was, it ended up costing us as a family probably eighty thousand dollars difference in what we made this year, you know, so. I'm not, I'm just putting that out there, you know, because I'm I'm I guess, you know, to be proud of making that decision for uh allowing the school to be able to hire somebody else and and another teacher and stuff for the difference in the money and stuff that she saved the district, so. And she was, been very sick. Um, moving right along. Uh, I guess, did we, did we vote on that one? Okay. I I had a check mark here, but I wasn't sure. Okay, next. Is recommended by the superintendent and elementary curriculum director to approve the attached preschool promise memorandum of understanding. Motion.
I move for the approval of the preschool promise memorandum of understanding.
Okay. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
First from Mrs. Neese. Second from Mr. Amsler.
This this MOU is something that we have done in the past. Um, this partnership allows us to survey parents and gather data regarding preschool experiences before coming to us as kindergartners, so it also helps with the date and learn to earn grant. So this is just something that um we're continuing to do.
Thank you, Dr. Blessing.
You're welcome.
May, we have a roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lewis?
It's Lewis, not Kinley.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's Mr. Lewis. Um, I I'm going to um have the other people wait, and I'm gonna let, actually let you uh make a motion this time, okay, so you don't feel useless during this meeting.
I never feel useless.
I saw your eyes close there, and I just thought maybe I'd wake you up. It is rec- it is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the following city uh school board of education approve the attached settlement agreement. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of settlement agreement with Centerville Hospital Hospitality Group, excuse me.
All right, thank you, sir. Do I have a motion? Uh, second.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Mr. Lewis, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Second from Mr. Amsler. And is this, you're Dr. Bl- oh, no, over here.
This one's mine, yeah.
So CFO then.
So I continue to work on settling some of these complaints that are filed with the BOR. Um, this is a settlement agreement of forty thousand dollars that needs the district's approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and good job.
Thank you.
We like money.
I do, and we do too.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Well, we we have the motion.
We did have the motion. We did, and she, we did a motion, she discussed it, now we need a a roll call.
There you go, Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, let's pass. Next is the improvement of a settlement agreement with United Church Homes LLC. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the settlement agreement with United Church Homes LLC.
Second, please.
I second it.
First from Mrs. Angel, second from Mrs. Neese.
Um, ditto, but this one is a settlement agreement for a hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars, so.
Cool. Roll call.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay, that item is passed. Next is the, is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the Myersburg City School Board of Education approve the attached settlement agreement. It's between uh the the school and Spring Pike Hotel LLC. Motion.
I move for the approval of settlement agreement with Spring Pike Hotels LLC.
Second.
Thank you.
This settlement agreement's for twelve thousand three hundred, it's gonna be paid in three installments over three years, so. Um, in total, you guys have just approved over a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in additional revenue for the district, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It took to get this.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed. The superintendent recommends approval of the agreement with the School of Education at Franklin University. I have a motion. Please.
Tim, do you want to, um, the, I move for the approval of the agreement between Myersburg City Schools and the School of Education at Franklin University.
Thank you. Any comments?
This is just a
Second first.
Sorry.
We need a second.
I second.
Somebody said.
So was that Mr. Toadvine?
First from Mr. Amsler, second from Mr. Toadvine.
Okay. Well, I have first from Mrs. Neese.
Oh, do that then. It's a little confusing tonight here. I did say good till about two minutes ago, right?
We'll get through.
We will.
You'll get it.
We will.
And this is just an agreement with uh the university for student teacher replacements.
Where is that university? I haven't heard of that one.
Franklin. Yeah. It's kind of an online.
Okay.
Yeah, it's online type.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
I don't know if it's Phoenix, University of Phoenix, kind of like that.
Okay, Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
That is passed. It's recommended by the superintendent, treasurer, and CFO and the director of business to approve an agreement with the Board of Trustees of Miami Township for right-of-way in eneasement. I have a motion.
I move for the approval agreement with the Board of Trustees of Miami Township for right-of-way eneasement.
Okay.
Second.
So I got first by Ms. Mr. Amsler, second by Mrs. Angel. Anybody wanna tackle this one?
Scott's in Columbus right now, I think, so um these are easements, I think, um.
For the Wood Road?
For Wood Road, correct, um as Miami Township is looking to expand and 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 um build a new site out there, so in in the essence of cooperation and collaboration.
It's it's actually, the the right-of-way is because the building, they're building behind where they're at now, and they need to be able to come across our property to get their utilities and stuff.
Right, it's not a big part, but it's enough that they need to be able to get across Jane Chance, where we have property that belongs to Jane Chance, so.
And it and it obviously is not going to affect us in the future if we wanted to build or do something also, so. We looked into all that. Okay, all right, a roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, that item is passed. It's recommended by the superintendent, treasurer, CFO, and the director of business to approve an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, for a right-of-way in eneasement. Motion. Slow motion, I feel like we're in tonight.
I move we approve the um agreement with Montgomery County Commission, the Board of County Commissioners for the easement.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, we had a first from Mrs. Angel, a second from Mrs. Neese.
This is the same project, but now um it's for, of course, um.
The county.
The county.
The county, and it's the water sewer sanitary easement that they need, so.
Thank you, roll call.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed. Next we'll move on to the financial agenda items. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the applications and certificates of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. I might remind people that the reports are available if requested in the central office. Um, may I have a motion?
I move for the authorization for amendment to the appropriations and certi- certificate of estimated resources.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, first by Mr. Amsler, second by Mrs. Angel. And then we're back over to you again, Mrs. Angel.
Um, happy to report that I'm asking you to approve the amended certificate of um the estimated resources, I know a mouthful, um which is our revenue estimates. Because we have, you know, successfully gotten the broadband um grant uh for twenty-five thousand. Um, Dr. Blessing and I worked on that, we're still gathering estimates and hope to have everything up and running um before the beginning of the new calendar year, so we need your approval on the new resources for that. Um, and of course, we had to adjust the budget accordingly to pay for the, you know, use the grant money. Um, and we had some severance payments and things that also needed to be added, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, further questions?
No, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay, that item's passed. Next we go to the acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through the each school uh zero-one-eight account unless indicated otherwise. At two hundred and forty dollars from Parkview United Methodist Church to the Myersburg City School District to purchase of Chromebooks. Two hundred dollars from Sam's Club, number eighty-one thirty-six, to the Myersburg City School District for the purchasing of Chromebooks. Two hundred and fifty dollars from Suresh Kumar and Vinkat Assar in honor of former students, um Su Darshan and Suresh Kumar. And um to the Bauer Elementary School, that's two hundred and fifty dollars to the Bauer Elementary School. May I, can I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the acceptance of of donations.
Second.
All right, we have first from Mrs. Neese, the second from Mr. Amsler. And once again, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for um all donations, they're very, very much appreciated. You know, our children are um the most valuable resources that any of us have, and uh investing in their education is just giving them another tool to to deal with life. So um, I'd like to say thank you to all these people that that made donations this evening. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next we'll move on to reports. Um. Next, we'll move on to reports. Um... Mr. Joey Zakovich, and I believe Dr. Blessing will be representing him this evening.
Yes, um, I'm gonna read a little, uh, report, and then we've got a quick video we wanted to share as well. Building construction continues, and our original goal was to move into the new north wing and south wing in December of this year. The administrative team has been planning for the move of staff and students into the two new wings. At this time, we're on schedule for the south wing, and the north wing is slightly behind schedule. We are hopeful of catching up, but we are also looking at options for a smooth transition should a delay occur. We'll keep you posted. The MVCTC is on the November third ballot for our renewal levy of two point one eight mils, and there will be a zero tax increase. Dr. Weldy will be interviewed this Sunday at eleven-thirty on Channel Seven by Jim Ott, Oddi, for informational purposes. The college credit plus continues to grow in popularity. Miami'sburg has fifteen students participating in the program. Diesel and Power Technologies is being highlighted as program of the month. Danny Kemper from Miami'sburg is a senior and participating in the program and is interning at Brown Transport in West Alexandria. We are proud of you, Danny. In the MVCTC good news this month, Joseph Lipscomb from Miami'sburg was recognized for his accomplishments and efforts as an aviation maintenance technician in our program. Great job, Joseph. Let me know if you have any questions or comments. Thank you. And we have a quick video.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Zakovich. That's a, it's a pretty big order there, out there, but, uh, it's gonna be wonderful for our students, that's for sure. Next, we move on to the student liaison, Ms... I'm sorry, legislative liaison, Ms. Sharon Angel.
And the legislature is not at work until after the election, so I don't have anything to report.
You don't have any opinions?
Well, I have lots of opinions, but you probably don't. Let's just leave it to say they're not working right now.
Okay, next, the student achievement liaison, uh, Chris Amsler.
Well, earlier, we saw the video of our fifth grade student at, uh, Jane Chance Elementary of, uh, Jack Pinto, um, which was a great video and, and, uh, it seems like everything went well. He was nominated by the fourth and fifth grade teachers at Jane Chance. They said Jack Pinto has a wonderful first impression during the first week of fifth grade. Uh, he has demonstrated polite manners, participated in all of his classes, and accepted the following, followed all the new safety protocols with a positive attitude. It is clear that he is ready and wants to be back at school. Even though he's only been, uh, even though the teachers have only known Jack for a week, we remember him from the previous grades because, uh, he is a student who smiles at the staff and greets them appropriately. Uh, when we asked his fourth grade teachers about him, their feedback was overwhelmingly glowing. They noticed, uh, how wonderful, uh, he was as a citizen of Jane Chance towards all others, uh, but he is also, uh, a wonderful student with his academics and class performance. In the spring, when Jane Chance shut down our doors, Jack was at the forefront of his class, helping his teachers get everyone organized to leave. And when they had remote lessons, Jack posted positive class messages on Google Classroom to inspire other learners. Jack has demonstrated, uh, by one of his previous teachers, as a fantastic leader, a rock star, and a genuine spirit who embraces his feelings, shares his heart, and gives kindly kindness freely. Jack is a role model, not only as a student at Jane Chance Elementary, but also as a citizen of the world. Keep up the amazing effects, Jack, and congratulations, uh, on this recognition. Also being recognized at our other schools, uh, for the month include Bauer Elementary School, uh, Braden Epp. Bear Elementary School, Carter Hurt. Uh, Kinder Elementary School, Jesse Nolasco. Mark Twain Elementary is Mason Cole. Medlarview Elementary, Briella Thompson. Mound Elementary School, Carter Weeks. The Miami'sburg Middle School, Isaiah Otto J. And Miami'sburg High School, Sean Seacat. So, congratulations to, uh, Jack as the district winner and all of our other students at the, uh, other schools that were nominated for the month. Very nice job, and, uh, it's a very nice touch of the video. I like that. It's good.
We wanna thank Brenda for doing that video. She did a very nice job, so...
Yeah, that was nice.
Yeah, that was excellent, you know, 'cause usually we have them here in person, and, um, that's COVID got us again. Okay, the, uh, latest, um, I'm sorry, I keep wanting to leave people out tonight. What is it, Andy? You're next.
Well, the Coalition didn't have a whole lot that really applied to us or to our community, but they are doing their two thousand twenty-one poetry and poster contest. And Amy Dobson, I asked Amy to send the info out to all of our staff. Um, they will accept digital entries as well, such as a YouTube video. I thought they presented some of those last year. They were really good. Um, the theme is about educating others, about the harmful effects of substance abuse, and the importance of mental well-being. And there's two divisions, grades six through eight for Division One, Division Two, grades nine through twelve, and the deadlines, January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. And you can go to www.mcdrugfree.org for details. There's really nice prizes, like last year, they did a laptop, a scholarship, um, let's see, this year, gift cards. So, I, I'm glad that Amy was able to send that out to all of our staff members. And then the other thing is I did speak to Bob Newbauer about BOLD, that's our student drug-free advocacy group. And he said that most of the seniors have, yeah, well, most of the kids in the group last year were seniors, and they've moved on, and they haven't had a lot of interest. But if they get it, they'll resume the group, but they're hoping, hope, hoping to partner with the, um, group called the Hope Squad. And I believe that's a group that is, has been created to, like, help students at the high school that might need some kind of support, um, friendship-type support. Is that right, Steve? Like, the Hope Squad?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure that, yeah.
They can't see me on TV shaking my head, so...
Okay, so... That's really about it.
Okay, thank you. The latest Making a Difference Honorees are Nutrition Services Supervisor, Ravella Lawson. Nutrition Services Administrative Assistant, Julie Smith. Transportation Supervisor, Michelle Reed. And Transportation Administrative Assistants, Kathy Myers and Jean Wardinger. They were nominated by Dr. Scott Yelberg. The Miami'sburg City School District was chosen as one of twenty-five winners of the Eighth Annual Healthiest Employers Award. This is sponsored by Marsh and McLennan Agency. The Dayton Business Journal reviewed nominations and selected only twenty-five of the most outstanding health and well-being programs created and implemented by local companies for this exciting awards event. This is now the second time Miami'sburg City Schools has been honored with this award. Congratulations go to Tony Allen, who does such a great job organizing the program here at the Miami'sburg City Schools. And I would like to say that Tony Allen does a fabulous job, uh, handling the wellness program here at the Miami'sburg City Schools. She does it with, um, a true passion. She has a true passion for it, and, uh, she was a teacher here once upon a time too for us, and did a great job as a, uh, health and gym teacher. So, okay. I know, Mrs. Angel, you hate this part, but I'm gonna ask you... Would you like to adjourn?
Do you wanna go around the table, or you still...
No, I don't. I'm tired. I wanna go home. You had to blow it, you know? She was on me by getting out early, and now she said... You did all right. Sorry, Mr. Lewis. I didn't mean to wake you up. Um, okay, let's start with you, Mr. Lewis, since you're on the table.
Awesome. Um, first, I wanted to congratulate everyone that is, uh, part of Miami'sburg City Schools. Um, we're one day short of the first nine weeks, and, um, that didn't happen without a lot of organization hard. Um, I would really like to identify, identify five ladies that, uh, have and are really going above and beyond their duties. Um, that's our school nurses. Um, Paula Morton, who, um, is at Mark Twain, Kinder, and Mound. Megan Tishos, who's now at our high school. Cheryl McNutt, who's at our middle school. Kelly Wall, who's at Bear Tower. Melissa Junker, who's at Jane Chance Maddox Lang, and does both of the Bishop Lible campuses. And, um, I just want them to know that they are really appreciated. Um, I do have a couple personal notes. Um, yesterday, my mother-in-law, Bobby Sweeney, celebrated her birthday. She is, uh, ninety-eight years young. Um, she, she's not ninety-eight, she's on her ninety-ninth year, but, which always really confuses me, keeping track of how old she is, but... Um, just an amazing woman, extremely active in Miami'sburg. Um, most people think that she was a Miami'sburg graduate. She actually graduated from Floyd Data High School in Texas, and, uh... When they moved to Miami'sburg, just, uh, basically became very, very involved, especially with the Historical Society, so happy birthday to, uh, Bobby Sweeney. And, um, today is actually our baby girl's thirtieth birthday. Katie Lewis is celebrating her thirtieth today, so, um, wanted to say that. And I also wanted to thank Steve Homan, Dr. Blessing, and Tim Fries for making this possible. Um, this is a one-time thing, and, um, I know this, uh, took some setup and everything. Other than some periods where I haven't been able to hear you, it's, it's, I've been able to see ya. It's been great, so, thank you, and I miss all of you so much.
We miss you as well.
Dr. Blessing, you said you promised you'd never lie. Okay.
Well, I would, I would concur with your statement in regards to Tony Allen. I think she does a wonderful job with, uh, uh, Healthiest, and, you know, when you go to work, the one thing that you wanna do is be able to retire and, and, uh, live a healthy life when you leave. And, uh, the more people get involved in doing that as they continue to, uh, go out throughout their career is, is, you just feel better, so... Um, plus, you're at work a lot more, and you don't have to go to the doctor, and our insurance stuff goes down, and there's just positives all the way around. Uh, I would like to say, uh, in regards to our custodians, uh, they do a fantastic job, but in... I mean, I think it goes without saying, uh, with all the things that they are incorporated of doing now within our schools, um, saying thank you really doesn't do enough, uh, for them. Um, but I just wanted to say I concur with that, and, um, thank you to all our custodians that are at our schools that continue to make things safe for all of our staff and students, and, and, um, you know, so a huge thank you there. Um, ironically, on a sad note, um, twofold, it is Fire Prevention Week. We did have a fire last night that, uh, affected a house...
In my neighborhood.
In, uh, Mrs. Angel's neighborhood. Um, so I just kinda want to, um, send my regards to that family. We do have a couple students within the district that it may affect, and I just wanna pass along the information to you, Steve, at the end of our meeting when we leave to, to when those kids do go back to school, that, that, um... You know, some people know and maybe give them a little, uh, TLC when they come back, 'cause, um, though nobody, uh, was hurt, uh, we did have a, um, uh, family pet, uh, not make it, and, um... They're a part of the family too, and it's just like losing somebody within the family, so, um, so, um, with that, um, I will, uh... Oh, most importantly, everybody have a wonderful fall break. Um, speaking of that, um... Heard a news thing this morning, how the Centerville kids were so happy to go back to school, and some of them were up before, you know, and I think it's just, I think it's just a positive that we have been able to stay in school. I know we've had some cases, um, but, uh, I think we made the right decision. Um, I think everybody is accustomed to what we're doing, and, um, to thank to everybody that was on all those meetings, and to you, and Steve, and, and everybody that's made this possible, that we're staying open, and, um... I think everybody's adjusted, so thank you to all of you that have contributed with that, so... With that, have a great fall break, um, and I will pass it on to Mrs. Nice.
Um, no, I, um, ditto on the custodians and the psychologists and, um, the firefighters. I know, Mr. Amsler, how much the kids look forward to the fire department coming to the schools. They absolutely love it. They listen to everything you say, and I'm sure it's saved, you know, many lives in Ohio. Um, I just wanna say, you know, thank, to continue to say thanks to the staff for this reopening of the school. I know they've worked hard. I know it hasn't been easy, and to thank the parents as well for following the procedures and the protocols. Thanks to the students. I've been in the buildings. They have those masks on, and I don't see any noses. I mean, they have them up, and they are walking in the halls politely. They appear to be, you know, paying attention in class. I, I actually got invited into Mr. Curry's class for a while, and, you know, they had their mask up, listening attentively, and, I mean, look, this, this is working because, you know, everyone's cooperating, and we, we have to keep that cooperation up as far as following those protocols and procedures, and, you know, not sending kids to school when they're sick. I know that, that, that's one of the protocols that the parents own, and I just want to thank everyone for all their cooperation. I think that was really about it. Yeah, that was just, yeah. So, I hope everything continues to go well, and yes, have a good fall break.
I'll just ditto what everyone else has said. I also want to say congratulations to our band and guard, and to all the athletics that were able to have their events this fall. I'm just happy they were able to get out and perform the way that they wanted to. Thank you, Tina, for giving us almost $200,000 in the accounts that we wouldn't have necessarily had otherwise. And I'll just say, everyone have a safe and joyful fall break, and come back ready to learn. That's it.
Okay, I'm gonna go quickly here. I'd like to congratulate once again the Students of the Month, thank the nurses for everything they do. Thank you, Tony Allen, for just being a magnet for bringing people into the wellness program. Ann's mentioned the children with the mask and the rules and everything, and I have seven grandchildren left in the district that are attending, and, you know, they come back and tell on the teachers, and they didn't tell anything bad. Everything was really good, so that's awesome. Custodians, thank you so, so much for everything you do. You know, a lot of times, I know you, custodians feel like they go unnoticed, but they really don't. I think, and I, Dr. Blessing probably never heard it, and I won't go into the whole thing, but one of my heroes was a custodian when I was a kid in elementary school, so, his name was Mr. King. Chris Amsler, thank you again for being the man that you are, and a lot of times, I know you work many, 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 many more hours than you should, so thank you for all that. Teachers, thank you for your MOU, the memorandum of understanding that everybody worked together to get through. And fall break, have a good one. Be safe.
Well, certainly want to echo your comments, the comments of the board, but I wanted to give a little bit of an update as far as where we are with grants. Dr. Blessing was successful, if I can enunciate, in getting us an expanding opportunities grant that's a little bit over $25,000 that you should see on your amended certificates for next month. In addition, Stacy is working with the Montgomery County ESC to use some of their coronavirus relief fund money to get us $48,000 to reimburse us for some of our expenses that we've incurred. So now we're nearing $1.9 million in additional grant money for this year that we wouldn't have gotten. So, as Dr. Blessing said last month, we're gonna keep trying every month to get at least one grant, so we're two ahead. But, so we're still pushing, still looking for additional resources that we can get. Have not gotten the $600,000 that I was hoping to get from Montgomery County yet, but they say it's approved, it's just delayed a little bit. So once we get that, we will be able to push forward with ordering all those Chromebooks and get things running.
Well, you better be careful, because the board will probably start thinking that the, the, when they, they used to do at the, at the car plants and stuff, if you put out too many parts, you just become expected of you to do it all the time, you know, so.
Well, I don't know.
So we're doing two of them off, so let's keep it rolling.
This year, it's, it's been a little easier as far as getting grants, because people have a lot of, you know, CRF or coronavirus relief fund money that they're gonna spend by December 30th. So I put feelers out there with everybody, and we'll help you spend it. We have, there, you know, there's no end to what we need and what our students need, and so we definitely want to do as much as we can to, to stay in school. So, you know, we will continue to press on, but I don't think we'll be getting $2 million every year, but we'll do our best.
Getting those applications out there and trying is fabulous.
Yeah, we're doing our best. So, I mean, the whole, your whole administrative team is looking and has, you know, has their eyes open for those kind of things, so we're, we're pushing for it.
And, you know, those things are very, very appreciated by the board and by the teachers, and just the district, period, you know. It's, it's, it's wonderful that you guys are spending the time to do that and bring things to the districts that are really beneficial to our children. Thank you. Mr. Holman?
Not gonna say very much, but ditto, ditto to everything. But I, one thing I do just want to reiterate again is, you know, as we've called the Stay in School Plan, it has taken every single staff member. It doesn't matter what classification you're in or whatever, it, it has taken every single person to make it successful and to get back to school and to help maintain the level that we're doing. And we were at a personnel director's meeting, and Miami'sburg was brought up about really leading the way, along with Van Delia Butler and some other ones, of, of returning back to school and leading the charge, and, and, you know, we have shared our information with other districts out there, they've modeled it because it's been successful. And those plans were drawn up by our employees and staff members from certificated and classified administrators, non-bargaining. So it truly has been a group effort of every single employee to keep us in school. So I just want to say that thanks myself in terms of that. One quarter down, or, no, we're not a quarter yet, almost.
Almost.
We're late to the first break, so, but thank you to everyone for doing that. It takes everyone to, to make the Stay in School Plan make it happen.
Thank you, Steve. I totally agree with everyone, and I want to let everyone know who's tuning in, and for all of you, that we are doing some, some normal school things in addition to the COVID and, and looking for fun, money and funding. We will be having our Viking Voices newsletter that will be going out later this month. And we are starting to have an Instagram page, so you can follow a lot of the activities and events, events on Berg Schools if you use Instagram. So hopefully those tuning in can do that as well. As we have talked about fall break, we want to give a shout out to Mr. Gilbert. He has planned our second round of antimicrobial cleaning in all of our buildings next week. Again, this is a COVID preventative approach that does a deep cleaning on all surfaces and lasts 30 up to 90 days, 30 to 90 days. So in addition to everything our custodians and our staff are doing daily, this is just another layer of protection. So appreciate Mr. Gilbert for getting that going. And we had a special birthday earlier this month, so happy birthday to Tina. She turned 29 on the first Sunday of the month, so we wanted to make sure to recognize Tina. Hey, that's, that's, it's, it's okay. So, and, and I just hope everyone has a great and safe fall break, and, you know, we just want to continue to do what's best for our students and staff and our community. So thank you. Thank you for all of your support.
Now, we can't forget that Dr. Blessing's birthday is coming up now, so she's, you know, not far behind me. It's October 24th. Yeah, she'll, she'll be 28. We'll, we'll be close.
We'll take it. Thank you, Tina.
Okay, you honorary people.
With that, I move we adjourn.
All right, we got a motion to adjourn for Mrs. Angel.
Can I say one more thing? I just, I just wanted to tell the students that have been quarantined and the families, you know, that my heart does go out to you. I, I know that that has happened through no fault of your own, and I just appreciate your patience and support and understanding as to why that had to happen, and I hope it doesn't happen anymore. So who wants to second it?
I second it.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a first from Mrs. Angel, second from Mr. Toadvine. And we have a real call.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 7:21.
Bye, Tim.
Bye, Tim. Be careful driving home.